Thank you for your peace. We speak shalom, peace over everybody on this call. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. So, um, this is always a treat to be able to, to honor people and to celebrate people. And first this morning, I want to, uh, uh, acknowledge the fact that, uh, we are so grateful for all of the ways that Lupina Fry makes a difference at Oklahoma Methodist Manor. Her gifts and graces are uniquely, uh, we benefit uniquely from Lupina's gifts and graces. And, um, she's been selected this month as employee of the month. When we asked her what, what she loves about working here, she simply said, it's the people. Lupina is originally from Dimmitt, Texas, which is in the Panhandle. She attended nursing school at Amarillo College. She's the mother of three grown sons who live in Tulsa, and she has four grandchildren, three girls and a boy. Uh, when she's not at work, she enjoys spending time with her grandkids and being creative. She's a painter, a jewelry maker, a photographer, and she's recently taken up making stained glass. Uh, so she's definitely a collector of art supplies. So, um, Bonnie wrote this, uh, you may not know this, but she's a little bit of a detective. Uh, ever since she was little, she's tried to figure out how things work by taking them apart and looking for clues and examining the pieces. Uh, she also really enjoys crime dramas, murder mysteries, and she likes to figure out whodunit. So if you wonder about that inquisitive side of Lupina as she, uh, uh, serves as, um, a wellness nurse, uh, that, that explains it. So thank you very much Lupina. We're delighted that we can honor you today and thank you, uh, for your service here.
Yeah, thank you so much to everybody. Um, I appreciate, um, the, um, the honor that this is and, um, I wouldn't want to be anyplace else.
Thank you very much. We also, uh, we also have the opportunity at Town Hall to acknowledge those who have passed significant milestones in terms of their employment at Oklahoma Methodist Manor. Cynthia Pettigrew, who works, uh, in Chapman Heights, uh, we're honoring her for five years of service, uh, at Oklahoma Methodist Manor. And, um, these little pins that you see on people's, um, uh, name badges, uh, signify how long they've worked here. So when you see that on somebody's name badge, um, it'll tell a little bit about them. Corolla Weber, uh, works in Bueller Place as an LPN. She's also being acknowledged for five years of service. And then Monalito Marshall, uh, is a security officer and he's being recognized for 10 years of service at, uh, at Oklahoma Methodist Manor. So, uh, as you see these people around, please, uh, join in expressing gratitude, uh, to them for their service here. We are so grateful, uh, for, for that. I'm going to move on to the, uh, COVID-19 status update and tell you that, um, this, this pandemic has really been, uh, quite an experience. We have been through several cycles and, um, nothing, nothing, uh, is harder for us than making decisions that, that restrict, uh, freedom or, uh, reduce the services that we provide at Oklahoma Methodist Manor. Uh, but in December, right before Christmas of all times, um, we began to see an uptick in, in COVID-19 cases. Uh, at one point, the number of people in independent living was up over 35 that either were, had tested positive for COVID or who had, who were in isolation. And, um, we have now seen those numbers decline to the point where, um, basically, um, uh, you know, we're back down to what we would consider to be kind of a normal level of activity. So we've been able to reopen the Charter Oak Dining Room. We've been able to reopen, uh, the Span Wellness Center. We've been able to resume, uh, services through the Tranquility Wellness Spa. And that is such a great relief to all of us. So thank you for your patience. Um, thank you for your, for your, uh, sensitivity to each other. And, um, uh, we are so delighted that, uh, things have progressed with the vaccine and that, um, uh, that we've now actually hosted the third and final, um, uh, vaccination clinic here on the campus. Uh, we're very pleased with the tremendous response that we got from the members of the community. And, um, we were up over 50% of the employees who, who took the vaccine as part of that process. Um, we wish that that number had been higher. We did everything that we could to get it higher. But, uh, we're pleased with, with the way that things, uh, ended up. And, um, uh, just trust that we'll continue to progress in 2021. Uh, watching and hoping that the numbers go down in Tulsa County and that, uh, you know, we're back on the path toward a more normal, uh, or a new normal, uh, quality of life, uh, for everybody. Um, with that, I'm going to turn the, uh, floor over to Dennis, who has some updates for us on construction and the weather and some other things.
Good morning. Thank you, everybody, for, for joining us today. Um, I'll kind of give you a, a high level view of the construction. Um, weather obviously has played a part in, uh, being able to, uh, accomplish outside work. Um, brickwork, those types of things, we're unable to do those. But the good news is before all this came in, we were able to get the, uh, heat on, uh, in the, in the memory care, uh, building. So.
Dennis, do you have your camera on? Can you turn on your camera? There you go. Thank you.
So, um, by having the, the heat on, that allows us to paint, put the trim work up, uh, continue to put millwork in, which millwork is cabinetry, those types of things. Um, we, we are making good progress, uh, on the MCAL and not falling behind a, at all. They, they are still able to do a little bit of work inside the community center. So all in all, with the weather event, um, and the cold weather predicted for the next week, uh, we don't feel like we're losing any time and our schedules are still, uh, still on course to continue. So, we, uh, we, if you were ever going to get cold weather, um, in a, in, as far as timing, um, the timing was, was, uh, good for the construction project and still able to continue. Um, as Steve mentioned, uh, we, we're talking about weather. You know, we were, we were analyzing yesterday and, and, and this is kind of an incredibly unprecedented year in that we have our normal operation puzzle where all of our pieces go together. We've kind of had to tear that apart and build a puzzle of normal operations with a unprecedented pandemic. And now we've had to tear that apart and kind of put, uh, uh, put the thing back together of normal operations, pandemic, and unprecedented cold weather and snow. So it makes it, uh, it makes it challenging, but the comforting thing about that is, is that the team that we have here, um, is incredibly diligent. We met yesterday, uh, we lined out and identified all of, uh, all of the problem areas. Um, we've secured ice melt, uh, which by the way, if you try to go to Lowe's, there's none in town, period. But we were able to secure everything we needed. Um, we secured, uh, extra loads of sand that are being stored for us off campus. Um, if the snowstorm is as large as they're talking, uh, in some areas 15 to 20 inches. I know they backed off a little bit here of saying eight to 10. But we're going ahead and making provisions as if they were right. Um, we've got a couple of dump trucks coming in to be able to move snow around campus. We've got big equipment that will be delivered, uh, in the construction area over the weekend. Um, these, uh, these folks are, are good contractors that work for us. And they're, they're willing to come on campus and help us and help the lawn crew, uh, if, if needed. You should be receiving a, pretty soon, you should be receiving, sometime today or tomorrow, you'll be receiving a menu. Um, those are, will be, uh, for meals for the patio homes and for the villas. Um, the restaurants will stay open, but we encourage you guys in the villas and patio homes, if you get all the snow, please stay, uh, in your homes if you can. Um, we will deliver meals, fill out the menu, just like it was real similar to the way it was during the pandemic, which the pandemic's still going on, but when we were delivering meals. Um, fill those out, get those, uh, back to us. We will, the, the directions will be on there and we'll pick them up. And we'll pick those up and we'll be able to deliver meals. We've extended our delivery of the mail and papers to the, to the front porches for at least another week. Um, that piece is in place. Um, it is, uh, it is pretty slick out. It's very unpredictable. You'll go along and there'll be a great road and the next thing you know, you hit a big patch of ice. So it's, it's really unpredictable right now. Um, we have, uh, communicated with PSO in case if we lose power. Um, we've identified our, with our engineer exactly how they can change grids for us. If, if we did lose power, we did, uh, we did verify with them and they sent it back to us in writing that we are priority power. So we will come back on. A little bit of a funny story. She did make reference that, um, the only thing that would be ahead of us. Uh, obviously we're in the group with the hospitals, but, um, the only thing that will be ahead of us is the sharks at the aquarium. They must keep the sharks alive. So they, the, the shark's power will come on before ours. So I, I've made light of that with her yesterday and I told her I was going to tell that story. So, um, hopefully we won't get outsharked here and, uh, if we lose power, we'll get ours back on. So nonetheless, we are priority. Um, and to give you an idea of how the priority works real quick, we're doing everything we can because each villa and patio home is metered individually. Um, it's difficult for them to be priority power. We're trying, we, we sent them the list to put every one of those on priority. But in case if, uh, for this storm, we're unable to do that, this is the first time they've offered that. Um, the big buildings will, uh, be priority power. They will come on if we do lose power. Um, obviously there'll be some, there'll be warm places, uh, for people to bed, uh, in our buildings. Um, some people like to do that. Some people like to come over and, and have activities and stay warm, then go back to their homes and, uh, sleep in their homes. Um, you know, but all of those options will be available. So we've done everything we can. Uh, last thing is, um, food service comes out of Oklahoma City. Um, we typically get 60 to 80 cases of food. We've got 180 cases in this week. We've got enough food to carry the entire campus for the next, uh, two to three weeks. So we've made those provisions, uh, to make sure that we can meet our menu obligations that we put out. So hopefully all in all, um, it should be very comforting that, uh, that you, you've got a great team here working for, for you and, and for me, um, to put all these pieces to the puzzle together and everybody, um, has done well. We'll make provision for employees to be able to stay on campus if, uh, if required. So I think we do have a couple of employees who live out at distance who are staying now. So we've got all of the vital positions covered. Uh, we're giving employees rides to and from work. So we've, we've got our inclement weather plan in place and, and, uh, working very effectively right now. That's all, uh, all the information I have prepared. If, uh, anybody has any questions, assume, Bonnie.
Yeah, I had a question in the chat, um, that said, do you, do we have a projected timeline for Charter Oak to be open for guests? I have a gift certificate from 2020.
Um, I do not at this time. Um, we still have, you know, we don't have any, any, any clearances or anything, any difference, uh, that's been posted by the CDC or by Tulsa County on our, um, open safely program or CDC, uh, guidelines. None of those have been updated to indicate that I would, I could do that.
Will their gift certificate still be good is I'm assuming the main question.
Um, yes. We will honor that. Yes.
Thanks. That's the only question I had in the chat box. For you.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Stay safe and, uh, stay warm over the weekend.
Again, we understand that, uh, this format is a little bit limiting. Um, if you think of a question and you want to put it in the chat, that's fine. If you prefer to call or email, please don't hesitate to do so. Jennifer Rawlings is next.
Hello, everyone. Um, as you know, if it's not shutting down for COVID, we're shutting down for weather, as Dana said. So we are constantly being flexible and I appreciate your, um, patience as you're flexible with us as we cancel and postpone a lot of events that are coming up and that have been scheduled. Um, today Irene is putting out an, in the interim. So we're reverting back to that since we've had to cancel a lot of our programs this week. And if anyone has gotten a heart, um, from any of the reservation boxes and filled these out, the deadline for turning these in was actually yesterday, but we will still take them today and get them distributed to Holloman and the Health Center members. If anyone has a heart, please get them turned in. And if you live in a house or in a patio home, please call the reservation hotline and we will come out and pick them up from you as well. And in the interim, there are, um, a little bit bigger hearts are going to be attached. And just like Lupina has decorated the Spain Wellness Center to celebrate National Heart Health Month, we are passing out gratitude hearts. So if you would like to write what you're grateful for, something that you love about OMM and put it in your window and that faces the exterior of the community so everyone can see it. Um, you can leave those up for the rest of the month and we can show, you know, the rest of the community, things that we're grateful for and to practice a little gratitude during this extra crazy time that we are experiencing. Um, and then just a couple of other programming updates. We are canceling the Saturday and Sunday movie as well as Sunday devotion. So all of our programming will be canceled throughout the weekend. And then we have canceled the concert for Monday night with Dawn Irwin because he's driving from Texas. And so we went ahead and, um, canceled his concert and we'll reschedule him in, um, March. And then we've also rescheduled, um, Vicky Smith, the harp concert for a date in March as well. But we will still celebrate Valentine's just later in the week. Hopefully when the weather is cleared up, we have, um, the Broadway penis and assistant conductor Kathy Venable has graciously agreed last minute to come do a Valentine's Day concert for us next Friday. Um, and she has two times, one and 2:30. So there'll be daytime concerts. And then the concert that was supposed to be on Wednesday will now be next Friday as well at 10:00 AM. So we'll have three different concert opportunities for next Friday for Valentine's concert. So, um, be looking at the, in the interim that comes out today with all of the updated information for all of the programming next week. And that's all I have.
Thank you very, very much. Uh, we appreciate everything you do and especially, uh, the creative ways that you have, turned ice into snow cones, I guess. Whatever, whatever that, whatever that illustration is. I have some information that I wanted to share from, uh, Carrie Owens. So we've had 10 settlements since September. We've had one in January and then, uh, one so far in February. And we have three reservations as of today. So, uh, uh, Carrie and Nadine are working hard, uh, to, uh, uh, get the word out about OMM. And they're actually planning a Zoom, uh, marketing town hall for prospective members. And it's actually, um, tied to the theme of how we're beating COVID through community at Oklahoma Methodist Manor. And, uh, they'll be talking about, um, uh, the quality of healthcare services. They'll be talking about, um, uh, current community engagement and a vaccination update and personalized services, uh, that we've provided. And also lifestyle and member engagement opportunities, social opportunities. So, um, they're excited about that and look forward to reaching out, um, to the Tulsa community with that news. So, um, I, I kind of view part of my role at Town Hall as, um, keeping you informed about the most recent developments, um, that impact our community. And, um, I want to talk a little bit, I'll, I think most of you are aware of the focus that we've had through the Change Consumer Task Force on, um, renaming and rebranding Oklahoma Methodist Manor. So this process began, uh, two years ago as the board and the staff considered the potential benefit of a new name for our organization. Uh, extensive research has been conducted that touched over 700 people. Uh, that involved interviews, it involved focus groups, it involved, uh, online and phone surveys. And, um, all of that work was, uh, was delayed or halted essentially when, uh, last year at this time, when concerns about COVID, uh, basically dominated our, our time and effort. But a consensus began to grow that with the opening of the new memory care assisted living households and the community life center, that we're completing what amounts to more than a decade of redevelopment work on the campus of Oklahoma Methodist Manor. Um, the conviction began to emerge that now is the time to make this strategic change. And at the January board meeting, the board voted unanimously to take this historic step. Now, having ratified this vote, the work now actually begins in a, in a new way. And frankly, in a, in a behind the scenes way to plan for how this news will be communicated and how it will be rolled out. Um, it involves much more than simply the selection of a new name. It involves the development of a detailed plan that will include things like a logo and the other aspects of the rebranding that are, that are critically important. They're in, these issues are inseparable from one another. And so, um, what I wanted to do today is to make it, make you aware of the fact that this decision has been made and that the announcement of the new name will be carefully planned and carefully executed. Today's not the day to announce what the new name is, but today is the day to let you na, let you know that there, this is to, this, this is something that you can expect as we look toward the future. The new name will not be publicly revealed at this time. And I would, I would ask graciously that you respect the important role that the board members and that the task force members who live in the community, um, played as part of that process. Some people don't even know what the new name is. Um, and so we've, we've, we've guarded that very carefully because we want the rollout to be, um, we want the rollout to be done very well. Uh, we expect that this process will occur later, later this spring. And I want to take the opportunity on the call to thank everybody. Uh, all the staff members, all the board members who were involved in the process. We're excited about the public announcement and we want to keep you, uh, informed about it. And we will share details as they, as they come into focus. I tried to think of an analogy, um, uh, as to, um, what this might be like. Um, and I've kind of struggled with it. I don't know whether it's like, um, discovering that you're going to have a grandchild or a great grandchild and not knowing the gender or not knowing the name yet. But yes, um, that, that's probably as good an analogy as I can come up with.
Steve, one of the questions says, did I understand that the name actually has been chosen? It's just not going to be announced.
That's correct. The, the name has been chosen and at the January board meeting, the board voted unanimously to take the step of, uh, uh, implementing this change. Now, there have been some other questions, um, that have been posted in the chat. And, um, let's turn to those, Bonnie, if we can.
That's what I just gave you, unless you've gotten some direct to you. Um, I've read you the ones that I got directly and the ones that have been to everyone. So if you have some that were directed directly to you, I can't see them, you'll need to read them.
Okay. So we are doing the movie today, Jennifer?
That's for next Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, for Wednesday. Sorry. Very good. Okay. So the, the movie on Wednesday, February 17th, uh, will be, uh, the USS Indianapolis Men of Courage. Well, again, I want to thank everybody for, uh, joining in this format. Uh, we, we look forward to the day, whether, because of an improvement in weather or because of an improvement in the situation with COVID-19 that we can meet together. If there's anything at all that, that we can do to serve you, please feel free to let us know. Uh, we'll be watching the weather carefully as Dennis indicated. We feel like we're really well prepared. And, um, uh, hope that you stay safe and warm over the weekend.
And for those that joined late or maybe came in and out, we are, we have recorded this town hall and it will be up on our YouTube page. Um, and you can get to our YouTube page just by going to our website and clicking on the link at the top. Um, but it will be up, um, hopefully by noon today, um, should you want to watch the whole thing. Um, but notes are also going to be put out today as well.
Okay.
Steve, can I, uh, can I add one other thing real quick?
Sure, go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, I just wanted to, to remind everybody, um, if we do get a significant amount of snow, um, we, we have a snow route or a snow plan on campus of how, uh, how we're going to remove snow from streets to getting emergency vehicles in. Obviously that's the number one priority. Um, the last priority is, uh, driveways and those types of things. Um, as, as Steve has said in the past, somebody's always going to be first with their driveway and somebody's always going to be last. Um, we try to take those, uh, based on how much snow there is and how, how we clear those. We don't have a specific starting place on driveways and a specific ending place. Um, I would just say that, uh, please be patient and we will get to you. Uh, we, we've got a lot of people, uh, that are going to be on campus removing snow depending on the volume. But, uh, we will get the driveways, uh, cleaned off and, um, uh, get them cleared and get ice melt down on them. But again, somebody has to be first and somebody has to be last. So, uh, please be patient with us, but we will get it done. Thank you.
Dennis, there's a, Dennis, there's a question in the chat, um, that says, when will the circle section be removed since they've now expanded that road area?
Um,
if you need, do you need more clarification?
I'm assuming they're talking about, uh, kind of a little roundabout where we have over by the construction area. Um, it's.
Julia, is that what you're asking? Yes, that is correct. Yes, that is correct.
We're probably going to have to expand that fence one more time for some work that we've got to do in there. I wouldn't anticipate that being put back to normal probably until pretty close to the end of the project. We've got a lot of big trucks that are going to have to come in that way. So I'm guessing sometime the end of March to the first of April. We'll get it moved out of there as quickly as possible. I know it's inconvenient. I just want to keep it flexible enough that we can get traffic in and out of there for the construction area safely.
Okay, I had a quick question. You may have answered this, but how can we get access to groceries?
We we don't we don't have a grocery shopping program during during inclement weather. We substitute that with a couple of options on the menus. As far as from dining for delivery, we will deliver meals out to to the villas and to patio home areas. Those of you who are in the buildings will be able to eat in Charter Oak and Cypress Grill from Felt House. So depending on what that is, there's some there's some delivery options, I think, that you could use through through Walmart, those types of things. But medications, those those type of things, I think, probably, there's probably some delivery options there. I would, if if you have an emergency need, I would contact Melanie and we'll see what we can do, obviously, to to try to offer some help. But at this time, we don't have an organized effort to shop like we did during the pandemic.
Thank you.
And is Treetop open where people could get some groceries in that regard?
At this time, it is. The problem with Treetop for now is we still have people having some reactions and things to to the shots that they've taken. And that's probably one of the first areas that we have to shut down in order to be able to meet the obligations in the dining rooms. So the hours of Treetop are probably going to be, they they may fluctuate a little bit depending on staff. But right now, it is open.
Dennis, there are there is a home care agency who does personal shopping for people. So that is an option if someone's interested in that, I can give them that information.
Can you can you share that with Melanie, please? And then people can visit with Melanie about that so they don't, well, you know, Melanie and Kim and them can help you with that. That's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks again to everybody for joining today. It looks like we've got 60 people involved on the call. And if there's anything that we can do to be of assistance, let us know. Otherwise, stay safe and warm.
Oh, wait, before everybody goes away, everybody turn on your camera and wave because I want to get a screenshot of everybody looking happy on Zoom. So everybody just hold your hand up like you're waving. Don't move it because it looks really weird. So Steve, move your hand in and then hold on. Everybody turn on your camera. Carolyn and Jerry, turn on your camera. Oh, hold on. Okay, hold on. Okay, hold on. I'm so sorry. People keep popping in and out and I'm trying to do this quickly. Okay, everybody smile. Oh, that looks so good. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you. Take care. Have a great weekend, everybody.
Goodbye.